I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of King George. Mrs. Bender?
Everybody, please rise. Please, Lord, bless us all tonight to make wise choices for all the citizens of King George County. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Mr. Miller, any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Yes, sir, we have several, actually. We do need to point out in the minutes that are at the end of the agenda that you would be adjourning to the work session on 2/22/22 at 5:30 PM. I think we indicated that you would be adjourning to the March 1st meeting. And I don't know if you had to go through this individually or if you just want to note that. Would they have to approve those amendments individually or could they approve them as one?
I think we can do all that once.
I think she says we could approve it as one.
Do all at once.
Okay. The other is that we need more time on Agenda Items 2-18 and 2-19. So I'd ask that we just table those and not have those presented to you tonight. Also, we have Sheriff Giles. We want to add Sheriff to the Constitutional Officers' Report.
What about 217? We're going to do that one as well. You said 1819.
All right, let me make sure my numbers are right. So it would be 17, excuse me, it would be 17 and 19, 217 and 219.
219, right, okay.
218 would be okay.
Right.
I'm sorry. And then the last item is we would need to have a closed session later.
I move to amend the agenda to change the adjournment date to February 22nd at 6:00 PM in the boardroom to add Sheriff Giles as a report for the Constitutional Officers and to remove Item 217, Department of Economic Development and Tourism Tech Funding Application, Native American Heritage Driving Trail Project, and Item 219, Department of Economic Development and Tourism Tourism Strategic Plan Adoption.
Second, friendly amendment.
Excuse me?
To add a closed session at the end of the meeting prior to adjournment.
Thank you. I would like to amend my, make an amendment to my motion to add a closed session to the agenda as well at the end of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Seeing none, Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Now, we're going to open up a public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone to an opportunity to speak. If comments are related to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. Anybody like to come up and speak? And please state your name and address before you start. Mr. Dines?
Dee Strauss, 10362 Ridgeway Drive. Good evening, Chairman, Board Members, Staff, and Community Members. I am the Department Chair for the Career and Technical Education Program at King George High School. This month is Career and Technical Education Month, and at King George High School, we have been sharing announcements every morning. Students have been and will hear about the different CTE course classes offered at KGHS. Students have been and will also hear about the CTSOs and how these chapters can enhance students' marketability by taking advantage of these classes and participating in these chapters. We asked the students to just imagine growing plants in a greenhouse, building a wall, designing buildings, welding sheet metal, creating a webpage, producing a video, running a store, learning to hack and not be hacked, doing their own taxes, putting on an event, balancing the books, and so much more. We asked students to take a different look at electives and think CTE. We wanted to share this with you here tonight in celebration of CTE Month. You have received our most recent brochure with our course listings, CTSO chapters, and industry certifications that our students can earn to make them more marketable. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Peltow. I live at 10496 Eisenhower Drive. Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. We are King George High School DECA, speaking to you tonight in celebration of DECA Advocacy Month. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. DECA's comprehensive learning program integrates into classroom instruction, applies learning, promotes competition, and connects to business. DECA prepares the next generation to be academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, and experienced leaders. Membership by the numbers, 152,000,000 members, 3,400 total chapters in all 50 states, in India, Indonesia, Japan, Korea, Korea, sorry, Antonuro, Poland, Puerto Rico, Saudi Arabia, Spain, Alberta, British Columbia, China, Germany, and Guam. Here are some dynamic impact on college and career success. 98% of DECA members report they gain skills to improve personal and professional behavior. Our KGHS chapter is made up of students in all marketing and economics and personal finance classes. We have over 202 registered members this year. Our officers are Natalie Peltow, Chapter President, VP of Leadership Rex Wang, VP of Career Development Andrew Water, VP of Marketing Adriana Manero, VP of Finance Tyler Trusslow, VP of Hospitality Catherine Bennett. Our Fox stocks managers are Alina Pointez, Samantha Tempted, and Lindsey Spillman. Our District 19 President is Alina Pointez, and our Virginia DECA Vice President of Leadership is Troy Spillman. National DECA has over $300,000 in scholarships that it gives away annually. Virginia DECA gives away over $10,000 in scholarships, and we have two students who were interviewed for these Virginia awards in the next two weeks. National DECA is sponsored by many industries, companies, and universities. You can see these sponsors on the deca.org site. KG DECA has many local sponsors, including Fredericksburg Eagles, Absolute Pest Solutions, Bayside Ford, and Bayside Cadillac Dodge Jeep and Ram, Exit Realty Expertise, Dr. Richard Cutrell, King George Veterinary Clinic, the Rotary Club of King George Dahlgren, C&amp;F Bank, and countless volunteers who have judged, interviewed, and chaperoned our members every year. We thank you for your support and for allowing us to share and advocate for DECA this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Peltow. Anyone else for public comment? Good evening, Mr. Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'm James Lynch, 8263 Oakwood Drive. Y'all remember, I'm sure, a month ago, we had a little snowstorm, Snowmageddon 2022. The, the snowstorm in, in a, in, in, at, in a, in, at, at addition to all the other chaos and trauma that it caused around here, took down hundreds of trees on the railroad trail. Because it was so wet and so heavy, we had trees just coming, coming across the trail, but literally hundreds of them. While we who normally get out there and keep up the trail, maintain the trail, were pretty, pretty sure that we could take care of it, we weren't sure we could take care of it prior to Easter. So I am, I am here to acknowledge the great numbers of our neighbors and our friends who, who, who came out in droves to help us out. I would particularly like to recognize here the employees of Jay Black, who came out on a couple of weekends, large, large numbers of them, to help us primarily on the eastern end of the trail. And I'd also like to recognize a, a military retiree, retiree chapter of Red, White, and Blue that go by RWB in Fredericksburg, who came out and spent two or three days working on the trail. This, if, if you've never ran into this RWB group, I would encourage you to meet them, get to know them. Not only do they come out and help us out on the trail, trail quite often, but they, they, they bring beer. One of our members from church met a lady who works in an office in Warsaw. Lady heard about the trail, went back to her office and recruited a, a team of people to come up from Warsaw to work on the trail and then spent a day clearing, clearing a mile of the trail. So with all this help from the community, we were able to get the trail cleared in about, about two weeks. So which, which we believe was quite. Mr. Chairman, it tells me I'm done. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Dines, anybody online? Has anybody received any correspondence? Okay, well, we will close public comment and move to reports of members of the board. Start the other way, Mrs. Kupka.
Ms. Strauss, before you leave, I just have a quick question. Are you still looking for volunteers or judges? Okay, yeah, I saw, I wanted to give you a shout out for that because I saw the newspaper article. So I wanted to make sure and make a plug if you're still looking for volunteers. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Strauss. And my own children participate in a number of the CTE classes that are in this brochure. So thanks for everything you and all of the staff there at the high school do to bring CTE to our schools. Have a good night. Sorry, I didn't mean to keep you. All right, let me move on. Wednesday, February 2nd, I attended with County Attorney Ms. Lackey, Chairman Stonehill, and Supervisor Bender, the Virginia Rural Caucus Reception in Richmond. We got to hear Governor Youngkin, Lieutenant Governor Sears, and Attorney General Miyares speak about their commitment to rural communities after their election wins in November. Thursday, February 3rd, myself and Chairman Stonehill met with Delegate Margaret Ranson regarding some pending legislation. We then met with Senator Richard Stewart regarding the same and the budget amendment to support acquisition of Lake Caledon property. We presented his copy of the letter of support to him, as well as the chairs, hand-delivered to the offices of the Chairs of the House and Senate Appropriations Committees. So I want to thank my colleagues again for agreeing to put out that letter of support for the Caledon potential acquisition of property to next to Caledon State Park. And I especially want to thank Senator Stewart for recognizing us in the gallery that day with the warm welcome of the Senate of Virginia during the session that afternoon. Friday, February 4th, I was honored to attend and speak at the King George Fire Rescue and Emergency Services Department Combined Academy Graduation. There were five recruits and promotional ceremony. There were three lieutenants that we are very pleased to move up into leadership positions with our fire department. So congratulations to all of them. Sunday, February 6th, I spoke to residents of Berry Plains Landing regarding our regional broadband project. I have an Economic Development Authority note. I forwarded this, had it forwarded to my colleagues, just want to make everyone aware. One of my appointees to the Economic Development Authority informed me that they plan to conduct a feasibility study, cost-benefit analysis of acquiring property at Somerset Beach. So I did, as I say, forwarded the information to my colleagues for their awareness. Obviously, the EDA is a separate political subdivision. They can look into those types of things, but I wanted to make everyone aware because it could have a budget impact if anything were to come up. I have an appointment. I wish to reappoint Mr. Jeff Shapiro to the Parks and Recreation Citizens Advisory Committee as his term will expire at the end of this month.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Seeing no opposed, Chair votes aye, motion passes.
Two upcoming volunteer opportunities. The Friends of the Rappahannock will host a litter cleanup here in King George County on Saturday, February 26th from 3 o'clock to 6 PM. You can visit their website to sign up. And King George Little League will host a Field Maintenance Day on Saturday, March 5th, from 10 AM to 1 PM at King George Middle School and Barnesfield Parks Diamonds. And I would be remiss as the Fire Rescue Liaison to the Board if I did not remind the public. Starting today, the 4 PM burn law went into effect today through April 30th. So please, everyone in the public, be mindful of that. Debris burning is the number one cause of wildfires, and obviously, we have lots of debris out there right now. So please take care if you do decide to take care of your debris on your own. And a note from VDOT, they estimate 27,000 dump truck loads of debris will need to be hauled out to clear all of the debris from the massive storm, and approximately 57,000 cubic yards of that is in King George County alone. So please, they are out there, they did start on 218 last week. Please be patient with them. They have a big region to take care of and clean up. Thanks, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Hopefully, this snow will be done with for now. Mr. Granger?
Yes, sir, thank you. I know Ms. Strauss and Ms. Peltow already left, but just like to thank you for having them come out, for them coming out to share with us about the CTE and Ms. Peltow about the DECA. So CTE, I think, is very important. My children as well participated in that, like Ms. Kupka's. I think it's great for building life skills and, and other skills. You know, a lot of times, we look to develop towards college, which is great, but there's also other avenues, and I think it's good that kids have those opportunities and, and that they're provided them at our schools. So thank you for coming out and sharing. Mr. Lynch, thank you for sharing about the trails. Two weeks is impressive. It was a tremendous amount of damage done. I'll be honest with you, I just got my, my trees finally cleaned up this past weekend. So it took me longer just to do my one area, so very impressive. And thank you for coming out and acknowledging everyone that came out to help out as well, so, and sharing that with us. Other than that, yesterday, on Monday, I had a FRA meeting. It's mostly just organizational, going through our budget, just making sure everything's on track, to review things along the lines like leads and projects announcements. So continue to see more leads and projects coming through. Announcements, obviously, the last, the last phase, and those are the hardest ones to get. But, you know, it's good that continue to bring in more leads and projects, and hopefully, we'll see some of those hits soon. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bender?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Strauss, I know she already left. My son was part of DECA when he was at King George, so I know she runs a very good program, and she's been around a lot of the school and helped out a lot of students in their career and professional life. Mr. Lynch, thank you as always. Haven't seen you in a little while, but I know you're very passionate about the trail, and it's great, we have so many good residents that come out and help to preserve the trail. Thank you very much for coming. Ms. Peltow, thank you for talking about DECA. It's very good to see young students come out to our board meetings. I wish we saw more of them come out and speak and promote what they do at the high school or middle school. Moving on, I also attended the VACO Rural Center Local Government Day. It was a great opportunity, and I enjoyed going to see the Senate session. That was a, was a quite interesting, and the first time I had been there, so it was pretty cool. And when we went, Ms. Winston Sears had her gavel, as we heard earlier yesterday, she lost her gavel, but she had it that day. And then, last but not least, I assisted the Dahlgren Heritage Museum, according with the county and Mr. Miller to, so they could temporarily move some storage containers and have them, as the lot is repaved because of the Nice Bridge project. And the Dahlgren Heritage Museum, I know a lot of people haven't been coming to it right now, but hopefully, when the bridge is done, there'll be more visitors, and they help promote the history of Dahlgren and the base. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Just thanks, thank you, everybody coming out and all the people from DECA, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Petlow. They, they do have a great, they do have a great program over there, and it's great that they're teaching folks kind of the, you know, as you mentioned, the life skills of balancing checkbooks and mortgages and, you know, all that stuff that they're going to have to do here, you know, very shortly. So thank you for, for them coming out. Mr. Lynch, pleasure to see you as well, like usual. I haven't got all my trees cleaned up and they're cut. They're not burned yet, but I guess I have to wait until after 4:00 now to do that. But I'm working on it, and I do have a, a letter here for Mr. Torian, support, that you would probably like to hear for the, the trail study. Outside of that, my, my colleague said I also attended the Rural Caucus, saw all of Governor Youngkin's new crew and his whole staff. It was great to see, they had just, they just brought so much, you know, excitement and, and, you know, new blood to Richmond. It was really great to see. And then also the Local Government Day on Thursday, and seeing the Senate visiting with Senator Stewart and Delegate Ranson. It's interesting to see their kind of layers down there in Richmond where they, where they are. Also attended, like Mrs. Kupka said, the Fire Rescue Awards. We do have five new fire, four firemen and one firewoman, and we didn't promote three lieutenants from, from inside. We just got rid of our Lieutenant Clift, and now we have another Lieutenant Clift. So congratulate, congratulations to all those folks. I would like to re-nominate, if that's correct, Cecil Chapman to the Citizen Budget Advisory Committee. He said that he wanted to do that again with us again this year, so. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That passes. I would also, it was brought to my attention by some folks about hunting here in King George, and I would like to get consensus from my colleagues about having staff look into changing one of our local hunting ordinances. State of Virginia allows hunting with rifles for deer, but King George has a local ordinance that says we cannot hunt with rifles for deer. You're allowed to hunt groundhogs, coyotes with rifles, but not deer. I did some research with Department of Wildlife Resources and also got ahold of Sheriff Giles and then Sheriff Dempsey as well. Nobody seems to know when this came in. It came in many, many years ago. Sheriff Dempsey said it was probably very early Moose Dobson days. And talking with these folks, we talked about these black powder rifles that they're using now that are capable of shooting the distances further than rifles. Some of them are 1,000 yards that they can use right now. So there's very little difference about a black powder gun or a rifle. So I would like to get consensus of the board to direct staff to look into changing this for the next hunting season. I'm doing that now because Richmond needs it by May 1st to get it into their regulations for the upcoming hunting season. So what do y'all think about that?
I'm amenable, I know we're going through the process of going through our ordinances. I appreciate you saying it, it's a little more time-sensitive in regards to getting in. You said May 1st is what it was?
Yeah, I, I thought we were going to be able to do it, you know, through the summer and everything, and then it was brought to my attention that it's actually in Virginia code that if we do that, it needs to go to DW, or, pardon, yeah, DWR by May 1st to get it, just to get it into the regulations.
I would, my only concern, so the, how long is the? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think this might answer, so, Mr. Granger, you're talking about the zoning ordinance. This is not in the zoning ordinance, this is in Chapter 10, Offenses Miscellaneous. So it would, it would not get done if we don't ask that it be done. So we need to go ahead and.
Fair enough. So from, I guess my biggest question would be from a time, timeframe perspective, because I know it's going to require a public hearing, and would we circumvent the Planning Commission? They wouldn't be involved in this, would they? Okay. Yeah, that's right, I'm sorry. I'm still getting wrapped around the axle, yep. So I guess then that means that we would have to move to advertise at our April 19th meeting. Because it would have to, well, no, it would have to even be before and then one in it. No, yeah, the April 19th meeting. So I guess my question is, would that be enough time for staff to pull everything together to give us presentation, make modifications, and provide it to the board and so that we have enough time to get it through the process?
I asked staff that question, they said they had enough time, but, Mrs. Lackey, if you want to.
We've had some discussions, and we've looked at what another county did within the past five years that we think might be a good model, at least for a proposal to move forward.
Okay. I have no problem with doing it, I just, that was my biggest, trying to make sure we could get it done. It's, it's, it seems like it's a long time, it just takes a while, too. So, but if we can do it, sure.
All right, so you guys good at having staff go forward and to do some research on it?
I know lots of people who would appreciate this, so yes, please.
So, Mr. Miller and Mrs. Lackey, if you could go move forward and, and see what we need to do about getting that process moving? Thank you. And then we have, we spoke in our joint meeting with TAC and everything in reference the, getting the consensus to send a letter to Delegate Torian for just the, to study of, to do a study, feasibility study for the property of the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail. And you were all provided with that letter, and just making sure you're good and get consensus about moving that along and sending that down to Richmond.
Mr. Chairman, can I add, though? It looks to me like the letter is currently addressed to Delegate Torian. And while he is the one who made the, or submitted the budget amendment, I really feel strongly that it needs to be addressed to the Chair of the House Appropriations Committee and the Chair of the Senate Finance and Appropriations Committee. Because those committees, what's going on in Richmond right now is the money committees have until the 20, 20, I think, the evening of the 20th this weekend to finalize their budgets. So we really need to get it in front of those committees, too. I don't feel that it's enough to just send it to the patron of the budget amendment. They're the ones who are going to be making the decision as to whether or not the budget amendment sticks. Not necessarily him unless he's on one of the committees. He might be, I can't remember off the top of my head if he's on the House Appropriations Committee, but somehow, we need, we need the letters, the letter to go to the decision-makers in the committees so it gets advanced. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. We all still good with sending that along with those changes, and we'll get it to the, the correct people besides Mr. Torian? Okay. Mr. Miller, if you, if you could get that changed, and we will get that sent along. Okay, thank you. And that's all I have for my report. So, moving on to the consent agenda.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion properly second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Moving on, county officials report. I see Mrs. Prut, or Ms. Prut, you were here in place of Mr. Jones. Okay.
I'm reading the monthly receipts and expenditures for January 2022. The beginning balance was $31,144,941.96. The receipts are $16,558,573.72. Disbursements was $14,523,755.41 for an ending balance of $33,180,508.13. And this has been reconciled to the general ledger.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Miller, if you can get that included, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Sheriff Giles?
Step right up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I wanted to come forward and give you the final tally of our cigarette inspections that we did. A little bit of it will be a recap of what they did my first, at your last meeting. But on Tuesday, February 1st, and then again on Tuesday, the 8th, and then Wednesday, the 9th of February, Deputy Commissioner of Revenue, De'Annapreis, and Deputy Simon conducted a cigarette inspection of all the stores selling cigarettes in King George County. They inspected 25 stores. Of those, they found eight stores out of compliance. They seized those cigarettes and issued summonses to the appropriate store clerks and managers of five stores. The other three stores that were not in compliance received a written notice and told to contact the Commissioner of Revenue for tax stamps on the small amount of packs they had that were not stamped. And this is kind of the recap. On February 1st, on the inspection of the border store, they seized 317 cartons, 224 single packs of cigarettes that were un-stamped and issued two summonses. At Murphy's, they seized 17 cartons of cigarettes, 39 single packs, and issued one summons. Fast Mart and Dalgrin, they seized 404 cartons, 1,189 single packs, and issued two summonses. February 8th, Food Lion and Dalgrin, they seized 66 cartons and issued one summons. The Tobacco Hut, they seized four cartons, 657 single packs of cigarettes, and issued one summons. So a grand total for those, all 25 cigarette seized were 404 cartons, which it's 10 packs per carton or 4,040 packs. Single packs of cigarettes was 2,109. Seven summonses were issued. Due to the fact of different pricing per pack of cigarettes, they averaged it out to be $6 per pack. And that 6,149 packs seized at $6 is roughly $36,894 of seized non-tax goods. So the best guess is between $35,000 and $40,000 between the inspections. The tobacco and vape, and Food Lion in King George and the Sams were all issued warnings for those inspections. So that's, that's the update. We'll give them some time to get through the litigation before we hit them again, probably sometime soon.
All right. Thank you.
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Miss, you're coming up later, correct? Okay. And I don't see anybody else. Moving on to report of the county attorney, Mrs. Lackey?
In the agenda package, there are two Dominion Energy notices that anyone can review. They were also published in publications as well. But I understand it's typical to give a brief report and the county attorney's report of what the substance of those were. The first notice has to do with a rate adjustment clause for an offshore wind project. That project is at a cost to Dominion of $9.8 billion, of which they are seeking to recover $79 million from rate payers. So they are having a public comment period. There's a telephonic comment on May 16th. Again, if you go to the information in the agenda package and you're interested in commenting, you can get the information there. You can sign up in advance by May 12th. You may also submit written comments prior to May 16th. And they have difficulty estimating what the actual impact is to customers. Depends on the usage. If you're a 1,000 kilowatt hour per month customer, it would be about a change of about $1.45 for the period of September 1st, 2022 to August 31st, 2023. The second notice from Dominion Energy has to do with seeking cost recovery for its renewable energy portfolio. So I think they're basically, as a regulatory matter, they have to get offsets for some of their less green plants. Again, the impact to rate payers depends on their usage, but they're estimating if you're a 1,000 kilowatt hour per month customer, it would be a difference of about $1.64. Dominion is trying to recover $140 million. And that rate adjustment is proposed from August 1st, 2021 to July 31st, 2022. And you can submit written comments prior to April 6th.
Any questions for anybody? Anything else, Mrs. Lackey?
I don't have anything further.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to 213 Board Commission Reports and Public Hearings. First one is going to be, King George County Board Supervisors will now hold public hearing that has been properly advertised, received on public input regarding the proposed redistricting ordinance. I'll first ask for the staff report. I'll then open the floor for public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone opportunity to speak. If you do want to speak, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon a completion of public comment, I'll bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight, depending on information reserved during public comment. Mrs. Gump?
Thank you, Chairman, Honorable Board Members. The only thing I need to say about the redistricting is, once it's approved, we will be sending voter registration cards out. For those that may not be familiar, all of the numbers have changed. Our Senate numbers have changed from Senate 28 to 25. Congressional, we are no longer in Rob Whitman's congressional district. We are now in Abigail Spanberger, so that will change. That will be Congressional 7. And then our House district, which was Margaret Ransom, was 99. That's now, that's now going to be House District 67. So with that being said, that means that every single voter in King George County will be getting a new voter registration card, which will indicate those numbers. That has to be done before March 21st. If we don't get our redistricting done by March 21st, that means that another mailing will go out that will indicate the redistricting changes for the county. Also, the move from the Dogren Potomac Elementary to the Mary Washington College and the re precinct boundary lines of James Madison. So there's a potential that some voters may get two cards during this time. Our goal and our hope is, is that everything will be done and that only one mass mailing will be able to go out. But that's just what I needed to inform the board and the members of the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Gump. Any questions?
With your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, may I make a request that since we are having a public hearing about the, in particular, the redistricting ordinance, can we bring up, can we go to the app on the county website and pull up the map so that, Mr. Dines, do you know where that is? If you go on the community development page and then hit, or just the GIS page directly, and then hit the redistricting? If we can have that map up so that if there is anyone who wants to provide comment, they can see the actual map? Thank you.
I also wanted to let the citizens of King George County know that we have a list of all of the streets that will be changing and the segments as to where they will be changing as well in my office.
Okay, while they're doing that, I guess we can open, we can open the floor to public comment. Does anybody like to come up and speak on the redistricting in public comment? Seeing none. Mr. Dines, anybody online who's called in? Okay, we will close public comment. So I will bring it back to the board.
I move to adopt the proposed redistricting ordinance as presented.
Second, if I, if I may, there is a joint ordinance to take care of both public hearing items. So it might be more efficient to hear the second public hearing item before action is taken on the proposed ordinance.
I move to rescind my motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment? Since staff is here and a great deal of the members that served on the redistricting committee are here tonight, and I just wanted to thank all of you for all of your work on the map drawing. We had several meetings to do that and the public workshop that we had. Thanks, everyone, for pitching in on this.
Mrs. Lackey, what do you mean? Do we have a joint motion for the next one having to do with insurance services, ISO?
No. There is a second public hearing item for the polling place change for the Dalgrin district. And then there's a joint ordinance. It's a joint in the sense that it's one section of the county code that covers all of election issues. So rather than doing piecemeal changes, it's one change. And I will go ahead and mention too, for the benefit of the public, that there is one error in the proposed ordinance that is in the agenda package. It shows that the courthouse precinct is still, it shows it as being at the old elementary school, but that was not meant to be any kind of change. It will remain at the high school. And so that will, that will be reflected in what is proposed for action by the board this evening.
All right. Thank you. My confusion is I have an old agenda and it's actually not on there. So, all right, so the second one is going to be the King George County Board Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised and received public input regarding, regarding a proposed polling place change. I'll first ask for staff report, then we'll open the floor for public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker. In order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please state your name and address before you comment. And upon a completion of the public comment, I'll bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or not take action tonight, depending on information received or in public comment. Mrs. Gump?
So the polling place change that the Electoral Board and myself brought forth to the board was to move Potomac Elementary to the Mary Washington University behind Walmart. Several reasons went into this. Number one was basically we're kind of outgrown the polling place in Potomac Elementary, especially the parking lot. The biggest reason is that it's so close to Dogren Naval Base that if something would happen to the point where the base would shut down and we would have an election, then we're stuck. Because elections don't stop just when tragedies or catastrophes happen. They continue on unless the governor would shut it down. So we have to be, make sure that people can get in and out. And we were so graciously offered to be able to go to Mary Washington University. It is ADA compliant. It serves all of the purposes that we need. And that was one of the reasons that we chose that.
Great. Thank you. The Potomac Elementary School has gotten very tight for all those folks down there. I've been to many, many elections down there. It's, it's tight. So, okay, we'll open up the floor to public comment. Anybody like to speak on public comment about the proposed polling place change? Seeing none. Mr. Dines, anybody online? Okay, we'll close public comment and we'll bring it back to the board for a motion for both of these.
I move to adopt the proposed polling place change and the proposed redistricting ordinance as presented to include for the polling place to show that the James Madison, I'm sorry, the courthouse district voting precinct is the high school as opposed to what was shown in the agenda.
Second.
Make a motion properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want to do a roll call? When you sign this one, you're...
Okay, we'll do a roll call. By vote, Ms. Bender?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mrs. Kupka?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. All right, we have those two. And we're moving on to 214 Presentations and Reports. Ms. Hall? You will come do and speak to us about the ISO rating?
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Also with me tonight is Rick Aaron, our building official. He's also available should you have any questions. Tonight, I'll be presenting King George County's Building Code Effectiveness Grading Schedule Results and Insurance Services, also known as the ISO rating. Insurance, an ISO is an insurer-supported organization with the primary mission of providing advisory insurance underwriting and rating information to insurers. There is no requirement that insurers use this advisory material. The purpose of the Building Code Effectiveness Grading Schedule is to review the available public building code enforcement agencies and develop a Building Code Effectiveness Classification for insurance underwriting information and writing... classification for insurance underwriting information and writing and rating purposes. Every four years, each locality is reviewed by subsequent measures. The schedule measures the resources and support available to the building code enforcement. It also evaluates how those resources apply to the mitigation of natural hazards common to the specific jurisdiction. These measures are to be developed into a relative scale from one to 10, with 10 representing a less than minimum recognized protection. Schedule is divided into three sections of review, administration, field inspection, and plan review. Administration of code evaluates the administrative support available in the jurisdiction for code enforcement. Adopted building codes, modifications of those codes through ordinance, code enforcers' qualifications, experience and education, zoning provisions, contractor builder licensing requirements, building, public awareness programs, building departments' participation in code development activities, and the administrative policies and procedures. Our total score for commercial was 42.46 and residential of 41.86, the possible score of 54 with an improvement difference of 3.67 from the previous review. Plan review is assessed, the plan review function to determine the staffing levels, personnel experience, performance evaluation schedules, review capabilities, and level of review construction documents for compliance with the adopted building code for the jurisdiction being graded. Total score for commercial was 19.13, residential was also 19.13 with a total possible score of 23 with a difference of negative 298 and 2.05 from previous review. Field inspection evaluates the field inspection function to determine the staffing levels, personnel experience, performance evaluation schedules, review capabilities, and level of review construction for compliance of the adopted building code for the jurisdiction being graded. Commercial was 20.30 and residential was 20.06, total possible score of 23 with a difference of negative .60 and negative 2.34 from the previous review. This chart shows a score over the past five cycles. Scoring is on a scale of one to 10 with 10 representing a less than minimum recognized protection. For example, the lower the, the score, the better. As you can see from the chart over the years, King George County has consistently approved, improved, and kept the same rating for the past three cycles. The ISO report is done nationwide and some items evaluated, Virginia does not allow us to govern, and are still considered in our scoring. Some of the factors that prevent King George from scoring lower include Virginia not adopting the 2018 building code until July 2021, which our review was May 6, 2021. While our staff is either certified or newly hired and in the process of being certified, years of service, recent retirements, new hires, and newly certified building official are all considered, as well as not having a licensed engineer or architect reviewing building plans. Having a licensed architect or engineer in the building department is not typical, typical of staff, is only typical of staff with much larger jurisdictions. For 2021, our final score for residential and commercial was a classification of three. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any questions from Ms. Hall?
So on the previous graph, there was a number of years there separating 2000, obviously from 2002 to 2013. Were we not graded on that timeframe?
Not that we were able to find, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question. What is the, I'm looking in our packet in the public awareness programs, what kind of public awareness programs do they expect? In, in our packet, page seven of, you know, when it goes more detailed into the scoring, it has public awareness programs.
I'm not sure exactly what they expect, but I do know, for example, with the new building code update, Rick Haren and his staff did put on a education program for our, our local contractors and, and surrounding localities. So that's just one example of things that we do for public outreach.
Okay, because that could be different things. So I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Ms. Cupcake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I had a couple of questions, Ms. Hall. First, I noticed in both commercial and residential on page three of each section with regards to training, we had, and I think that was one of, one of, one of the data points, 8.84 points scored out of 13. And granted, it is higher than it was in 2017, it was a 4.98. Do you have, do you have a plan going forward to try to provide more training opportunities for your staff so that we can score more points? Because that sort of, to me, seems like something that should be pretty doable as long as you're getting people more training.
Participate with all training, all of our people do become certified. But again, with the retirement of our previous building official and that overturn and, and new hires is why we scored a little bit low in that training. But everyone is, is on track to be trained and we certainly provide that to them.
Okay, great. And then the other question about zoning provisions, it says, number 140, where possible, specials through ordinance or code amendment zoning provisions that address mitigation measures for buildings subject to local natural hazards. Can you speak to that, please? Because we got a zero.
I'm glad you asked that because I too had that same question. So when we called to question that, apparently that's a problem across the board as far as forest fires, that only the state of California actually scores in that category. And that's something that in the upcoming review, our examiner said is likely to change.
Okay. And then the other question I had, my understanding is during this ordinance, the zoning ordinance overhaul that we're having performed, checklists will be part of the process or maybe an add-on at the end of the process? Are those the same checklist that we did not score very well on and?
Those checklists are public facing. These checklist that are under this review is internal, that stay with those documents for the life of those documents. So that's something that we're working to change. You know, just a simple checklist to make sure that they have all those components.
Great, because that seemed like a
A low lying fruit.
Yep, yep, very good. All right, thanks so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I don't, I don't have any questions, but just thank you to you and your staff and Mr. Haren for coming out tonight, giving the presentation.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to the 215, Department of Finance, provide funding to Empowerhouse due to a loss of a federal grant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At our meeting on February 1st, I brought this action item before you to provide funding to Empowerhouse for the loss of their federal grant. At that time, the board instructed staff to see if we could get someone from Empowerhouse to come out and make a presentation. Before leaving here that night, I reached out to Donna Kraus, the Deputy County Administrator at Stafford County, and she put me in contact with Ms. Kathy Anderson, who she and I spoke over the next several days, and she has worked very hard to put together a presentation for you tonight. I've provided that to Mr. Dines and he's pulled that up. And Ms. Anderson has brought some other individuals with her, and I will let her introduce them so that I don't mess up anyone's name. So at this time, I'd like to have Ms. Anderson.
Chairman and members of the board, county administrator, good evening. Thank you for having us here. I'm Kathy Anderson, Executive Director of Empowerhouse. This is Eileen Domann, the Chief Nursing Officer. This is Eileen Domann, Senior Vice President and Chief Nursing Officer at Mary Washington Healthcare. We also have Jaclyn Olivera here from Empowerhouse, who is the King George County Court Advocate based in the Sheriff's Office. The first few slides is really going to help you have more of an overview of Empowerhouse and the services provided in King George County. So we'll probably go pretty quickly through those. And next slide, please. So as you probably already know, Empowerhouse has been around since 1978, originally as the Rappahannock Council on Domestic Violence. This allowed our localities and our community to really formulate a response to support survivors and their children. And this started through work of law enforcement, magistrates, social workers across the planning district and others in the community to today, fast forward some 40 years, where we now are serving over 3,500 people last year even through COVID. And I wanted to point out an initiative that started in 2017, and that was an initiative supported by a grant that has allowed today Empowerhouse to serve 205 King George County residents last year. And over the years, over the past six years, over 1,100 survivors and their children. And you can see that that happens through King George County at the Sheriff's Office here. Thank you to Sheriff Giles. And also other areas such as King George Courts, our Empowerhouse Domestic Violence Shelter, not located within the county, community organizations, businesses, other public locations, and our hotline. Next slide, please. So the reason I talk about a grant that occurred in, in fiscal year 17 was because that allowed us, it was the first year that Empowerhouse had location-based services in King George County. And again, that was thanks to the Sheriff's Office allowing us to open an office in there, within their building. And because of that, year over year, there was a 32% increase in the first year of providing those services in King George County. And again, that was made possible by a grant that allowed Empowerhouse to reach out to particularly African-American victims within the county as in all of our localities, we serve five localities. In King George County, it was the only jurisdiction where our services did not match the census in terms of serving African-Americans. So for us, that was an underserved population in King George County, and many things were made possible at that time. And that, in that year, the county voted to award Empowerhouse a match to that state grant of $15,815 in that year. Next, thank you. So in 2017, you can see some of the successes that, that were made possible by that grant, which were 90 community engagement activities, 139 folks trained in various locations, churches, health offices, et cetera, and 2,500 domestic violence education materials distributed in the county. Here gives you an idea of how services changed over the years, and I think the main point of this slide is to show how significant the increase was by having location-based services in the county. While folks were being served at, prior to that date, you see a marked increase starting in the year where, in which we had someone working directly, physically located in the You can also see historic funding that, how in the county of King George, where support was provided to Empowerhouse as a partner agency, like many other partner agencies at that time, going, you know, I didn't make the chart go way back, but King George County has, has always been a strong supporter of the Empowerhouse services alongside the other jurisdictions in, in supporting our work. Here you also see, relative to the Empowerhouse budget, which is about in the middle, you know, the funding from the various localities and how, and, and at what percentage the localities fund the Empowerhouse budget. So there's a combination of ways that the organization is funded, including federal funding, state funding, locality funding, contributions, fundraising by individuals, businesses, churches. There is many avenues to make a collective set of services for the community now. And I will also say that our housing and our shelter program is our most expensive set of services because they're located within a building. And also the funding that flows through some of our grants also allows us to help people into housing programs to include paying deposits and months of rent and things like that. So they're, they're kind of, depending on the service that someone is receiving, some of those services are more expensive than other services. So that make, makes up the total budget. So really, the, the issue, I think, that was before you, that prompted the invitation to come and speak, really was to help dissect what the request was. So we, annually, we make a budget request, as do other partner agencies, and that, that is not what was before you recently, two weeks ago, I believe. So the, the request that was made to all of the localities was related to a federal grant that we received for a three-year period. We are applying for that grant again this year. There was a gap in that grant in that their, October 1st, 2021, that funding ended for us. For us, there were a couple of things that grant funded. That grant was awarded to Empowerhouse. We applied for that grant at the request of Mary Washington Healthcare. Because at that time, forensic nursing services, which Ms. Domann will speak to, at that time, those services were in high demand and, and there was difficulty in keeping that service staffed 24 hours and accessible to law enforcement, to victims, to folks who really needed that compassionate care and evidence collection. So we'll hear about what that is. So when there was the gap, we, and Empowerhouse is not, does not make emergency supplemental requests. This request, we talked with Stafford County, our partner, and, and we talked about how this nurse is a regional service to all of the localities and that let us know what this gap funding, what the amount is, and how we may help at this time. So as you can see, for each of the localities, the amount requested for the forensic nurse is proportionate to the folks served. So you'll see that the request to Spotsylvania is much higher than the request to King George or to Caroline County, because there's more patients, more victims served in Spotsylvania County. The same thing with Stafford and Fredericksburg. You see two Stafford requests because, I think that was a question that came before the board, was King George being asked to fund something that was a Stafford service? And the answer is no. That portion, we requested directly from Stafford County for the services of our advocate that works and is dedicated to that county, county. So that, that's the long and short of the grant. We can come back to speaking to that in a few minutes. I believe the next slide has a presentation from Mary Washington.
Thank you, Kathy, and good evening to Mr. Chairman and the members of the Board of Supervisors. My name's Eileen Domann, and I'd like to give you just a brief overview of what the Forensics Nurse Program is and why it's so critical to our community. Next slide, please. Our forensic nurse examiners work in the Emergency Department at Mary Washington Hospital. They are specialized and certified trained RNs. They're trained in forensics, interviews, and exams. This certification process takes between 12 to 16 months of full-time work. They're available to see all victims of violence, including domestic and sexual assault. They treat, they care for these victims, they collect forensics evidence within the Emergency Department or the Safe Harbor Center in, in Fredericksburg. That evidence is then forwarded on to the state. They do this in very close partnership with local law enforcement. I'm very proud to tell you that there are a number of cases that have been successfully prosecuted because of the expertise of the forensics nurses. The part that I really want to draw your attention to and why it was so critical when we pursued this grant funding was the idea of having the forensics nurses available 24/7. Unfortunately, we don't control when victims of violence come into the Emergency Department, so we really do need to have that service available 24/7. What we heard from all local law enforcement, including King George County, was that when there is not a forensics nurse available in the Emergency Department and that victim of violence or sexual assault needs to be examined and evidence gathered, then they have to go to an Emergency Department that offers the service. What that means What that means is that instead of driving from King George to Fredericksburg, they're driving up to Fairfax or they're driving down to Richmond. And so that victim, who's been a victim of a violent attack, is now in a law enforcement vehicle and having to be transferred very far away from where their home and their loved ones. On top of that, in order to do that, it also takes a member of law enforcement and a law enforcement vehicle out of the county for an extended period of time. And we heard multiple stories of where law enforcement was essentially tied up for a whole shift in order to be able to get that victim of violence taken care of. So we heard the message loud and clear from our law enforcement partners that having the service available 24/7 was critical. This grant provided the funding that we could expand the service to 24/7. So really, the request that Ms. Anderson is talking to you about is to help us cover this gap period of time until we can pursue grant funding again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to present your numbers?
Sure. Sorry. Just you can see also, looking at what our numbers have looked like. So the total of victims that have been served by the forensics nurses over the last couple of years, you can see the number change. And we also seen the increase in King George. And I know those numbers are fairly small for King George as compared to others, and that's a good thing. But those numbers are definitely going up. And what we have seen, Ms. Anderson could talk about, is a marked increase in cases of domestic and sexual violence as we have gone through the pandemic. So we certainly see this need increasing, unfortunately, in our communities. Thank you.
I think there's two more slides just to underscore the, you know, the total presentation. And then we'll have questions. Next slide, please. Thank you. So again, the entire community has benef, when I say the entire community, I'm talking about Planning District 16. So the five localities all have benefited from the addition of the forensic nurse that was provided through the direct federal grant from the Office on Violence Against Women. As you know, as those of you have done grants, it's time-consuming to seek out, to put together successful competitive applications and then keep up the grants administration for those. So that is something that Empower House is perfectly, you know, perfectly will support. But this is a year where we don't have that grant funding. And I will say too, that as a result of the grant, again, regionally benefiting the community, there were other activities that benefited the entire community, including the strangulation conference. Sadly, that is something that it's hard to imagine you'd have a conference on. But that is one of the most lethal forms of domestic violence. And as a result, it's also one that impacts public safety and law enforcement officers returning to those homes if those cases are not successfully prosecuted, if the evidence is not collected. It also has tragic health outcomes, which all of us learned through the training provided. And this was training that was provided to nearly 400 professionals across our community. While we partnered with Mary Washington and their emergency room folks attended the training, while Stafford County sent most of their sworn law enforcement and most of their prosecution office, those were dedicated free slots. The rest of the community were offered, the remaining 200 slots. And there were folks attending from King George. And on the last slide, I think it's the next slide, one of the deputies, it was shared with me, talked how much that training advanced his practice as a law enforcement officer and how that is something that when these types of grants are received in the community, how much of a difference it makes for those attending and how they seek out these opportunities. Again, it talks a little bit about strangulation and some of the health outcomes and the training that was provided to multi-professionals. So I know you have these slides. I think that's the last slide. I think the last one is suggesting questions. Hopefully, they've all been answered. But we're here to answer questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Questions, anyone? Ms. Spender?
I just wanted, for the forensic, it seems to be a very specialized, so you just can't find, there's training involved before they even are hired, probably, correct?
We hire them and we do on-the-job training. So they are hired, and then during that first 12 to 16 months of their employment, we get them through the process of being able to be certified. So they have to, there's a number of classroom things that they have to attend, but then they have to do demonstrations of a certain number of exams, a certain number of evidentiary interviews. So they have to demonstrate competence, and the whole process takes about 12 to 16 months.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Scott?
So later, I'm hoping that staff has a recommended source if we decide to move forward. Has staff identified a potential source of funding?
It would have to come out of your general, your general fund, and we'd make up the difference at the end of the year. Is that correct? Unless there's some kind of a...
This is a healthcare need. Could it qualify for ARPA money?
That's what I was going to say. The original request in my board report from two weeks ago was to take it from general fund balance. But as looking at some of the ARP numbers today, we still have a, from our first allotment of funds from ARP, we do have considerable funds left that we could, if it was the pleasure of the board, that we could use ARP funding to cover this emergency request of $7,919. So I ask that you would authorize the county administrator to move it from the project line over into a line that would be created for ARP for Empower House.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a follow-up question?
Right ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. So that, when you're saying ARP money, that's our first tranche of ARP money that we got last July, the original 2.3 million. That's not the new tranche, because I remember we had like $40,000 that we didn't...
We had $47,159 roughly left over. And then we had several projects that came in under budget to around about $50,000. So we have about $97,000 left from that first. So I think that would, this would definitely qualify. One of the things in the ARP, all of the interim final rule, and then the final, final rule, it does talk about donating to nonprofit organizations. And if anything qualifies, I think that Empower House does.
Thank you.
I don't really have a question, but Sheriff Giles, if I could, you could come up and I could put you on the spot for a minute?
Mr. Chair.
Just checking with, off the top of your head, if you can, sexual assault and domestics increase since the start of the pandemic?
They haven't decreased. No, I mean, an increase, I haven't seen a large enough increase to say it's not just waves, you know, not specific to the pandemic. But there's always an increase. There's definitely, the groups staying together, staying in the houses, getting on each other's nerves, so. But this, the program is invaluable. I mean, $7,000, that's overtime that we would spend taking them to Richmond just to be, you know, examined. And it's an invaluable service. I mean, there's nothing worse than going out to a scene and having a situation and not have a resource that you can use to just say, well, sorry, battle it out. You know, I mean, I can't tell you, I, well, I'll be, I wasn't a big fan of Empower House when they first came out. Truth. But after getting to know Kathleen and Jackie and the rest of the crew and seeing the job that they do for the citizens of the county, I mean, they're invaluable. They're just invaluable for the service they provide to the county. And then the same nurses do 15 minutes up the road with a victim versus 45 down the road and then 45 back. I mean, I wouldn't want to be the victim even doing that. Stay in, you know, unexamined on the way down to make sure it's a good examination. You can't clean yourself. And what an embarrassment that is to ride 45 minutes in a police car down, even if it's unmarked with a detective, out of uniform. So that's my point.
Any questions, Sheriff? Thank you, sir. So do we have a motion? I move to authorize the county administrator to transfer $7,919 from the ARP budget line to the Empower House budget line? Oh.
We will actually set up an Empower House ARP budget line, so you might want to add that. Because there's already a budget, a GL code, set up for Empower House where we've donated in the past. But since this is going to be ARP money, we need to track it separately. So we have to set up a ARP Empower House budget line.
I'd like to make an amendment to my motion to set up an ARP Empower House budget line and then to transfer $7,919 from the ARP Projects line to the ARP Empower House budget line.
Yes.
Second.
Do we motion properly second? Any discussion?
My only discussion is that this is, I think, something that we certainly need. And the numbers, you know, comes out to $38. And our part of it is $38 a person. So I think it's a very important thing, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody not in favor? I don't see. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Ms. Anderson, and if I mess your name up, I'm sorry, Domon, and Ms. Olivera for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Moving along to 216, Department of Finance, amend and appropriate the FY 2021, 2022 budget for Smoot Library.
Yes. So the library director received notice from the Library of Virginia that the approved state funding for library books was $140,596. This is $7,696 over the estimated amount of $132,900. Each year, the state estimates the available funding but sends notice of the final funding to the library director. And I included in your board packet a copy of the letter that Ms. Tenny received. So at this time, I'd like to ask you to authorize the county administrator to amend the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget for the additional $7,696 state library funding and to appropriate the funds.
Any questions? Do we have a motion? I move to authorize the county administrator to amend the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget for the addition of $7,696 to state library funding and to appropriate the funds.
Second.
We have a motion properly second? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along to 218, Department of Economic Development Tourism Refa Request, the REFA request for a second read. Mr. Miner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just working? Okay. So tonight, I'm coming to the board of supervisors to request a second reading for the Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, or REFA ordinance. So just a quick recap. Again, you guys have already seen this slide before. I'm sure everybody understands it. But what it is, is it's created by two or more localities, at least two of which need to be counties or cities to collaborate on development of regional industrial properties. Locality sharing the cost and tax revenue using the REFA as administrator and facilitator. REFA's are used to pursue high-impact economic development projects or mega-site, site development. So for update and also the recommendation, the city of Fredericksburg has scheduled its second reading for March 8. Their first reading was completed on November 23 of 2021. The Stafford County Board of Supervisors were presented on the Rappahannock REFA February 4 and will revisit with their Community Economic Development Committee on March 1. They're projected to adopt the ordinance in early April. Obviously, the King George County Board of Supervisors completed our first reading December 8. And based off of the discussions we had with the city of Fredericksburg, they did agree to the change to call the, which once was the Fredericksburg Regional Industrial Facility Authority to the Rappahannock Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Staff is here tonight to request that the King George Board of Supervisors authorize staff to set a date and advertise for a public hearing for the second reading of the Rappahannock Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miner. Any questions? How far out would we need to, how long does it need to be advertised for? The public hearing, is it 30?
We just have to advertise it as an ordinance, so it'll be advertised two successive weeks.
I'm sorry, say two?
Two successive weeks before adoption.
Okay, thank you.
More or less 14 days.
Anyone else? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to direct staff to set a date and advertise for a public hearing for the second reading of the Rappahannock Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Second.
Motion properly second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Yeah, could I ask a question real quick? Do we need to actually set the date? Or do we just let staff pick the date? Yeah.
I don't think you need to set a specific date. Well, I'll just confirm that we have the correct advertisement done, and we'll set it on an agenda with Mr. Stonehill's discretion.
Okay, thank you. So we need to make an amendment, or? No, we're good. Good? Okay. Motion was properly second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Miner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, moving along, Mr. Miller? County administrator's report?
Yes, sir. So, excuse me, I will have a number of items that are already on there, but then I also have some other items that I'm, including, first of all, the resiliency plan that you all had made a direction for us at the last meeting. We are, there is, with the current arrangement on the timing, it's April 8. We feel that the best use of our time, I don't, first of all, I don't believe that we could make it work to where we could apply for a actual plan by that time in terms of the amount of public hearings that you would have to do and the community input. I think we are really, you know, probably a couple of months behind already on this. So what we would like to do is apply for a grant that would then help us write our own plan. And so we, as a staff, met and we are focusing on a number of areas that the staff has gone out and looked at. And we will give that information to you in a way that you can comment on those and, you know, provide any additions. So obviously, Matthias Point, Bayberry Subdivision, Potomac Drive, and also the Delgrin Wastewater Treatment Plant and Pumping Stations are some of the items that are in there. We noted that during the site visits, that majority of the affected areas were likely flooding due to a lack of ditches and culverts, either not being maintained or non-existent. We will also point out to you, though, that we're going to work with VDOT because a lot of these areas that we identified are actual VDOT properties. And so we'll have to figure out how that comes together. But we can do the gra- But we can do the grant and we will, you know, do that in-house. Again, it's April eighth is when, when all that is due. And Heather, is there anything else that I'm missing? Now, you gave me a big old long list, but, you know, we know it's a, it's a major issue. We, we, we obviously can't cut and pace existing plans and then call it our own. I think that would be more difficult. And I think just to do it the justice, we need to go ahead and go with this route. And, and I wish, you know, if we had had this maybe two to three months earlier, I think we'd be in a far greater position to have this submitted on time and, and, you know, have, have the plan adopted according to the timeframe. But it just, the amount of, the amount of staff time on it, plus the fact that you're going to need to have some good community input on something like this, I don't think we, we make the, the April eighth deadline. Reminder, your budget work sessions, it was pointed out that I, and I don't know, I don't know if you have to go back and change it, but the, the, the first budget work session is the twenty-second, and it's going to have to be at the fire station because there is a BZA meeting in here that night. So it would be five-thirty at the fire station. We hope that they don't have something else, but we'll ask them to move if they do. Or we'll put their budget up first and, and they'll make sure that you get to have it. The upgrade on, or an update on Dalgrin Wastewater Treatment Plant operation. So I was able to inform the Board of Directors of the Service Authority that things are vastly improving. We are hitting all of our, the right numbers in terms of the, the number of phosphorus, various chemical things that I can't talk about with, with any really certainty that I know what I'm talking about. So I'll leave it to the engineers, but Dalgrin is, is vastly improving and we're very happy with that. We are working hand in glove with the DEQ regulators. We meet on a regular basis. We have a number of projects that are going to most likely spin off from this that deal with inflow and infiltration, which is water getting into the, to the manholes or waters, get water getting into your, your, your actual distribution lines or collection lines. We are also going to be looking at some things to do with what's known as an EQ basin, which is a holding area, kind of a holding pond. There's going to be some repairs to that. And then there's going to be some, what, what are known as a UV system overhaul, ultraviolet, which treats and looks at the bugs and all that kind of stuff. So things are working in that direction. Unfortunately, DEQ still has not released the, the various waters in and around the, the treatment plant for the shellfish harvesting. What's interesting about their order is that they are counting in the, the, the ban on shellfish harvesting of waters that are already have a ban on them. And I think Chairman Stonehill knows that area very well and has indicated that these areas have been closed to shellfish harvesting for, for a long time now. And so they continue to have this kind of be as a, until further notice. So we're going to work with them because, you know, our concern is, is that we're meeting all of their expectations and they are just holding that back right now. And, and we need to try to get some clarity to that. Status of some CIP projects, I think it's very important to note, and I've got a number of them, but the Containers for Sealston Convenience Center, those are, purchase order has already been taken care of on that. Eight to ten weeks on delivery, so that's, kind of shows you the status of things right now. The evaluation of Ralph Bunch, the former middle school and existing courthouse. Supervisor Bender had asked me about this, but we are, we've got a purchase order on the Ralph, Ralph Bunch and the middle school project. Wiley Wilson will be doing the Ralph Bunch project. And then we're also waiting on Mosley. They're going to do the middle school and the old courthouse. I think the feeling was, is that because they're doing the architectural work on the new courthouse, they would be the entity to, to work with on that. So Travis Cusenberry is coordinating that and, and working very well with that. The new finance system, the RFP will post this week for the project manager. And then the next step would be obviously just begin the building of the process, so. The Rivercomb Parking Lot and Drain Tile, which I know is a major project. We are waiting on quotes for the drain and the scope of work for the paving to post on an RFP. And that would be spring work, so let's all hope that we get some good pricing on that. The roll-off truck, that has been purchased. As you, as you remember, we, we put that in the CIP and we were able to go get it. And amazingly, it's had three cables that have had to be replaced. So we have got everything back in, in good order, though, and we worked with the manufacturer on that. Park safety upgrades, the fencing for Sealston and the bleachers for Barnesfield have been completed. We're going to do the fencing for Barnesfield will be, will be done early in the spring. The tennis courts, right now, the tennis courts at the, at the middle school, the quote exceeds the funding level, which we had estimated about four hundred thousand. So it shows kind of where things are right now, and we're going to work to get the estimate lower. And then we'll go to work on that. And I think the final one I would just point out is the fire engine. The engine has been ordered and is being replaced. And I have a whole other bunch of updates, but those are more of the, the ones that, you know, are, oh, yeah. Those are some of the ones that I know that, that maybe there's some interest on. I'm happy to forward this little report to y'all just to keep you informed of where we are on our CIP projects. And that's also ARP money as well. If you remember, some of those projects came under ARP. The last item, I will tell you, two items left. Oh, I guess I have more. Okay. Before I go to those, if you get phone calls, Heather informs me that the septic pump-out notices went out today. And sometimes Board of Supervisors will get notices. So that's a, every five years, we are required to do that. That's by virtue of the Chesapeake Bay relationship that we have. So if you get calls, you can direct them to Heather and her staff. But that may be one of those things that some people wonder why they have to do this, so, but they have to do it. The other thing that I would report is that the FEMA disaster declaration for the January third snowfall means that we are eligible to get a lot of our costs, especially salary, you know, and, and other expenses reimbursed. So we are in the process of working with Ms. Hahn on developing a, a list. And then we'll get that submitted through Steve Lind and the Fire Department. So that's a good, good, good news. Okay, so Service Authority Board of Supervisors work session. Some of y'all were able to, were obviously able to participate in our two-by-two meetings that we held regarding the merger, possible merger, proposed merger of the Service Authority with the county and the creation of a Public Utilities Department. The Board of Directors of the Service Authority would like to request a joint meeting. So you'd be thinking about a date. I know we're getting ready to start budget, but it would be something that we could arrange a, a joint meeting to talk about this subject. You know, and, and if you have any questions about it, I can certainly answer any right now. But I know you all were able to participate in some fashion in learning some of the information about what that proposal's all about. And I think as Ms. Lackey pointed out, that, you know, no two members were, more, no more than two members were present at any of these meetings, which is certainly, you know, was not an open meeting. It's the best way to inform you all and to provide you information and to let you ask us questions. And it's perfectly legal, so I hope, you know, we don't have those kind of concerns. Ms. Huber, is it her proposal is to film you all, videotape y'all in various acts of work and responsibility? Everybody has indicated they're interested. Mr. Collins, who's not able to be here tonight, Supervisor Collins, he, he's ill. He indicated that he was interested. I think Supervisor Bender indicated she's interested. And I believe Chairman, you're interested, and I think Ms. Cupka, you, were you interested as well? So I don't know. Right, so I can, you know, coordinate that with her if, if you would like. And we'll, we'll get her here to start filming you guys. Action shots. Okay. The monument. So if you recall, we set up a process that had a thirty-day kind of a window to advertise that the monument was, that the board had taken action to move the monument and that there was a process that you would be open to proposals from other citizens or companies to move the monument. That process went about thirty days, and then we actually added another thirty days because we, we didn't have all the right information on there, on the website. That period of time stopped on the sixth of February. So basically, it's back, it's ready to go. We obviously did a, we did receive a, a proposal from a company to, to move that monument. I know that Ms. Lackey has been in coordination with Mr. Stork from Historyland and would have, you know, more to add if, if, if you're interested in that. But essentially, you know, our timeframe is, now it's back in your hands in terms of what you want to do. And I don't know that you have to do anything tonight, but I'm just advising you of that situation. The next slide will just point out the employee hires and the anniversaries. I'm not going to try to read them. The last time I did that, I think I had one of, one of the fire and rescue guys was all, all of a sudden a, a deputy sheriff, and they didn't know who, who he was. But I will point out that Steve Lind, obviously, twenty years. Louis Pankati, who was here, three years. Let's see if we got anybody else up there that's here in the audience. Who? Okay. Okay. Pass along our, congratulations. So that just shows you the number of folks with anniversaries in January, and then those are the folks in the new hires.
And Ms. Petruski, who's upstairs.
Yeah, that's right. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. I know that VDH was actually out sampling today. So they were headed up Williams Creek and up Pachota Creek to get some more water samples. So hopefully they'll, they'll get that straightened out. Okay, having that complete, do we have a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask a question of the county? Can we members be afforded time to ask questions of the county administrator with regards to his report, please?
Sorry, any questions for the county administrator?
Yes, please. So, so your recommendation then with regard to the resilience plan is because we wouldn't have time to draft our own plan and have the required hearings and so forth and submit a project for a grant? So the idea then is to write the grant for funds that would be used to draft our local resilience plan? Am I?
Yes, ma'am.
Correctly?
It will be, it was a ten percent match? Okay, she's correcting me. I'm sorry.
I believe because of our median income, I believe we bump into that twenty to twenty-five percent.
Okay.
So do you have a estimate? I know we have multiple engineering services firms on retainer. Do we have an estimate of what they think it might cost? Because, no, we don't have an estimate.
We don't have that. I know some people were saying some of their estimates were as high as a hundred thousand. Is that correct? And, you know, so we have not had a conversation with anybody.
I was just trying to get a feel for what the local match might be before we, yeah, before we commit to doing that. I mean, I'm not saying I don't want to do it. I just, we'd like to know what the financial picture would look like on it.
I will shoot to have something back for you at the next meeting where you would have an idea of what the estimate might be in terms of a match.
Okay, and then Ralph Bunch High School in particular, will they be doing? I know they're going to do a condition assessment of the, all three of those buildings. Will they be doing a breakdown of the various things that are, need to be repaired? And like an update, because I know they did one back in twenty-eleven and then another one in twenty-seventeen. But will they be providing a new breakdown of, in dollar amounts as far as what they think it would cost to rehab particular items? Or is this just kind of a condition, condition assessment? Will that, will some financial data be in there?
It's my understanding from the scope of when you all discussed it that it would have an assessment of its current condition and things that'll have to be done rehab-wise, that kind of stuff. And then there would be a plan for, you know, ideas or whatever, options for the use of those facilities. That's how I took that plan. So I will make sure with Mr. Cusenberry that that is what we're doing because I thought that was the intent of the board, was not just a, here's the condition of the buildings because that's really kind of not the, I mean, the, the intent is, what are we going to do with the buildings? And so we, we, you know, would definitely be focused on that as, as more important. And yes, there are issues with buildings, but what are we going to do with them?
Right.
So.
Thank you. And then my last question is, with regard to the tennis courts, you said it was, it came in over. How much money are we talking, like, we know from hearing Ms. Hahn that we had, we came in under in some of the ARPA money, and I think we used revenue replacement ARPA funds, if I'm not mistaken, to fund that project. Is it within the amount where we have enough wiggle that we could consider that?
I'm not certain. I don't know, Donna, if you have that, Ms. Hahn, but it, you know, it, it is a, Mr. Clark was going to, you know, he started the process and he got some quotes, I guess. And some of those came in higher than the budgeted amount, and that's why I think we were just like, let's keep working it.
So the tennis courts was CIP funded, not ARPA. But we could, we did, like on Sedell Brooks, we mixed some funds. But he was going off of a contract, a VAS Cup contract that UVA has, and the estimate was four hundred and twenty-nine thousand and some odd dollars. There were some questions from Phil Rollins and Bryce.
Young.
Young. Concerning that, so Mr. Clark is going back to them with those questions, and so that might lower the price. So he's working on that. He's also, there's another, I believe it's also VAS Cup, that he is asked for a quote from them as well. And so that's, he's still working on that, trying to get it at that four hundred thousand because that's what, at the beginning in CIP, that was what the price was. And then it's gone up since then. Of course, everything's going up, so.
Yeah, and I don't think it's an indication of we're not going to, you know, we don't want to, we don't think you ought to do it. We, it's more of just to give you an information about where we are on it and. And, you know, hopefully we'll get a, we'll get some better costs so that we can move forward with that.
But right now it's 29,000 more.
I would point out too, that I didn't mention the Ralph Bunch roof. We are working with an engineering, with our, not our engineering, but our roofing.
Yes, we have a consultant and they are in the process of preparing an RFP that we can get posted. They were going to have the documents to Ms. Turner about a week ago. She still has not received those. So she's reached out again to see when we'll get those. And as soon as we get those and review them, then that will be posted as well. As the, I think Mr. Miller mentioned that the RFP for the project manager for the new financial system will be posted by the end of this week. So we hope to also have that one posted in the very near future. And I believe you also talked about the parking lot. We hope to have an RFP posted by March 1st. That would give us a 30 day window. And to be able to get that started, Mr. Muncy believes that April would be a good timeframe. I know that a lot of the plants do not make hot mix in the winter time, especially in our area. And they start making it again around March or April. And that's what we're, so we didn't want to put it out too soon. And Mr. Muncy will be getting a scope to Ms. Turner on that as well, hopefully by the end of this week.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for indulging my questions.
Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to discuss development and coordination and potential incentives for a project of regional significance pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 Tag 3711A 5 and 6. These provisions permit discussions concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry. Interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community and discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where it may public initially, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected. I invite the county administrator, economic development director, community development director, and county attorney because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 Tag 3712F.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. We're in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
We have a motion properly second. Each member please certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
Here so certified. We are in open session. Do we have a motion?
It's Company One at 5:30. Is that correct? Okay. I make a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, February 22 at 5:30 PM at Company One.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Meeting is adjourned.